Okay, good evening and welcome to the June 12th, 2024 Orange Board of Selectmen's Meeting. In the event of an emergency, I think everybody here has been here enough, the emergency exit would be the stairway up to the rear parking lot that everybody entered to come in. If for some reason that's not passable, the hallway to the rear will put you out to the firehouse or up the stairs behind the wall with the clock on it through the double doors will put you out in front of the town hall. With that said, please rise for the board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with introductions tonight on down there. Good evening, PJ Shanley.
Good evening, Judy Williams.
Anne Denny, Secretary to the Board.
Good evening, John Corangelo.
Good evening, Mitch Goldblatt.
Okay, very good. Now we need a motion to close the regular meeting and convene the public hearing for the application for the Neighborhood Assistance Program of the State Revenue Service for New Haven Hebrew Day School. It was presented by Hershey Heck, the director at the Southern Connecticut Hebrew Academy. Is there a motion made for that?
So moved.
Okay, motion is made. We have received no correspondence from anybody regarding this. It is a yearly action that we take on behalf of them. We're required as the legislative body to take the action. However, we have no ties to it and it is not Town of Orange money. It is state and federal funding that they use for improvements and things over at their school, over on Route 34. So does anybody in the audience have any questions regarding this public hearing? Does anybody at the table have any questions or concerns on this?
Make a motion to approve.
No, we have to.
I'm sorry.
We have to close the pub-- is there a motion to close the public hearing then?
Sir.
A motion made and seconded, thank you. Is there a motion to approve this request?
No motion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Thank you. Okay. Public participation, public participation is for any item that is not an agenda item. We allow two minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience for public participation? Seeing none in the audience, is there anybody at the table that would like to say anything? Yes, Mitch, come on.
All right, two things at the transfer station. One is we want to thank both Home Depot and the Rotary Club for facilitating getting us the new shed that's there for bags. I do need to remind people that the bags have to be clean and we do not accept or they're not recyclable feedbags, mulch bags, fertilizer bags, anything that snack bags, has to be the, you know, and no black bags, has to be, you know, plastic that's used in wrap and just regular, regular bags. We bring them to Home Depot and they do recycle them through Trex and, but they are pretty strict in what they can take, so we're looking for people to please be compliant with that. But that shed should be there for a long time, hopefully. And then second of all, I want to thank First Selectman Ziole for coordinating with Oak Ridge and Urban Mining to set up. He's got a picture, he's put the camera on the, on the picture there for a new bin just for glass. You do not have to recycle separately your glass, but we are encouraging people to recycle their glass separately for several reasons. One is the cost will be much less to recycle it this way for the town. Also, when, when anything is recycled, single, not single stream, but by itself, it is that much more of an economy of scale. This goes to Urban Mining, which actually works it into a bituminous pavement type of recycling. But even so, anytime either you're recycling glass through the, or aluminum for that matter, through the bins at the stores, or anytime it's separated, you're getting a cleaner product and it'll be better. But this is better for us all around. We're on a trial basis here with Oak Ridge. Let's hopefully, once again, it's glass only, and I say glass, it's glass jars and bottles. So liquor bottles, wine bottles, soda bottles if you don't bring them back to the, the store, beer bottles if you don't bring them back, mayonnaise jars or ketchup jars or pickle jars, things like that, but not mirrors, not paying glass, anything like that. So we're hoping that that works out. If it does, it will be better for recycling and save the town money.
Excellent.
Thank you.
It does, we have to pay obviously for it, but this has been my pet peeve for a long time, since I put cardboard recycling in. And I've brought this up at COG repeatedly and all, and they can't get out of their own way out there. Council of Governments is COG. And finally, I just kept pushing our recycling people and, actually Anne took a couple pictures for me. There's one, this is the front of it, and there's a slide door on the front if you're a tall person, and there's a slide door on the side right next to the single stream if you're not such a tall person. And, but either one, it doesn't matter. They have other signs, better signage coming. But, so we finally have the glass and, you know, we're paying a little over a hundred dollars a ton to have our recycling hauled away. So you start taking the glass out, even though it has an expense to it, it's a lot less than the hundred and six dollars a ton or something like that that we're paying when you're dumping it into that single stream container. And it's amazing, if you're there, especially on a Saturday, and you listen to some of those people dumping their bins and stuff in there, I think there's a lot of happiness in the Town of Orange, is how, how I have to sum it up. But any other announcements? I have a few here. Okay, well, we lost some good people this month. We lost Jack Barton, who was a police commissioner, right almost to the end unfortunately, did a great job for many years, lived here in town, he and his sons and wife. And he then had an excellent, good companion, his friend Lee Schlesinger for many years also. But Jack was a supporter and a mainstay of a lot of good organizations and things that went on here in the town. Carol Heckman, Steve Heckman, for those of you who don't know the Orange Times, very unexpectedly, just didn't wake up two Saturdays ago. Sunday? Yeah, just went to bed, everything was good and just did not wake up. So that was tragic. And Walter Hein, whose health had failed for a while, almost 90, would have been 90 in, I think, August, passed away also. So three people who were very involved and did a lot with the community over the years. Walter was on the Board of Finance and chairman of the Board of Finance for like 25 years, provided school transportation among many things here in the town. So all these families have felt some heartache this week, which are these last few weeks. So that's unfortunate. Best wishes to all the graduates of all the schools. I attended so many of them, it was really great. Elementary schools had great graduations, kindergartens unfortunately got put inside because of the rain. The high school, it was hot over there, but it was a much less of a crowd. It was only 330 some odd graduating this year. We've sat through some years where there's almost 500 getting their diplomas there. So some days are longer, but congratulations. Especially important, congratulations to the Amity baseball team, being the state champions. They beat Staples nine to one, I think it was, the, the other day. And that's, that's a huge feather in their cap. Congratulations to all of them and their coaches and parents and everybody involved with that group. Glass recycling, we already talked about. The culver installation, now this is the one you at the board will remember here, Mr. Bucknell, Al Bucknell, had been in here a couple times talking about it. That's the one over in his neighborhood. Coachman's in old country, so that's going to be starting in the next couple of weeks. A couple of trees were removed that were in the line of fire and so that's coming along. Mrs. Shaw sends us a memo that June is dog license month. Residents who own their dogs can obtain their yearly dog license from the town clerk, and that's the month of June. So your dog's license is bigger than the dog.
Already got it.
I'm sure you did. The Orange Economic Development Commission and Corporation is having their Artisan Fest and Vendor Fair Thursday, June 20th, from 2:30 to 6:30 at the Community Center. Also, that day is the first summer concert at the gazebo. The Sob Brothers are playing from 6:00 to 8:00. Interesting. The farmer's market will begin on Thursday, June 27th, from 3:30 to 7:00 p.m. at High Plains Community Center. Thursday, July 4th, town offices and the transfer station will be closed for the Fourth of July holiday. However, we need to remind everybody at home that the Fourth of July concert is on the Fifth of July, and the rain date is Sunday, the 7th of July. The fairgrounds open at 3:00 with food trucks, the concert begins at 6:30, and the fireworks usually are, I think, between 9:30 and quarter to 10:00 approximately they start. So remember, there is a parking cost and that goes to the Orange Crushers, which is a youth baseball team. For their trip yearly, there's a group that grow through this process and they go to Cooperstown and get to play at Cooperstown and be with other teams from around the country and all, so that's where that parking money helps defray some of that cost. So, let's see, the fireworks, it's going to be, it's a tribute to the music of Pat Benatar this one, this year, featuring Melissa Lutardo. So it looks good. We have a bunch, how many food trucks of different types do you have? Twelve or 13? I think Anne has worked on that to make sure that has all fallen into place. So that's all I have for tonight. Minutes, to consider an act on the minutes of the May 8th, 2024 regular meeting of the Orange Board of Selectmen, that was the meeting that was held at High Plains. Any errors or corrections? If so, state page and paragraph, please. If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Motion's made in second and third. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Stayed? Unanimous, thank you. New business. Item number one under new business is to consider an act on a request from the Fred Wolf Park Ad Hoc Committee to continue with B&amp;L Companies to develop a revised, updated master plan for Fred Wolf Park. Selectmen Corangelo and Shanley and Derek and Dominic are all in the room, so if you two would like to speak to it first and then they would come up and explain where it will go from there, I guess?
Sure. Please. Thank you. So as you know, you formed this committee over a year ago. Our initial task was to undertake traffic and safety study, which was done with the assistance of B&amp;L Companies. The committee as a whole has enjoyed their experience with B&amp;L. They've been very attentive upfront and have provided various different scenarios that may work at the park. So based upon our work experience, we felt that we would like to continue it. And with this board's blessing, we would like to do exactly that. I provided your office and the committee with, you know, a letter, you know, asking that this board chime in on it. We do not have any voting ability as far as monetary hiring of people, but it's been working, it's been a very good relationship, and we'd like it to continue because the end result, ladies and gentlemen, is to get this master plan in place and figure out what we're going to do with the park as a whole. And on that note, I'll leave it up to Shanley, Mr. Shanley, to see if he has anything to add to it. Otherwise, both Derek and Dominic are here from B&amp;L to answer any questions that this board may have that PJ and I can't answer.
No, John, I think you did a good job summarizing everything. We've had a pleasant experience with BL. They've been accommodating. We already have the temporary measures that they recommended in place. I think the traffic flow there has, has worked out really well. I think they understand what we're looking for as a community. And it's my recommendation along with the board to go ahead and continue with them.
So are you two, which one of you or both of you are going to pitch this next part? Who would, who would like to?
Well, I'm dragging Cheryl.
Yeah, you better come up there so the people at home can see you.
Good evening, I'm Derek Cole, I'm the Vice President for BL Companies. Just going to brief remarks and turn it over to the guy that actually does it all. Appreciate the comments on our partnership with the town to date at the park. It's a great facility, great park with tons of potential. We've enjoyed working with all of the stakeholders that have been participating along the way, and this is the next big step to plan for the future, and we're excited to do it. And it's perfect timing with the town's blessing. If you're ready to proceed, we're ready to start immediately. And I would ask Dominic Seltruda, our project manager, just high level overview of what we're looking to accomplish in this master plan update.
Dom? Thank you again, Dominic Seltruda, BL Companies. You know, we undertook a safety, security, and parking circulation study. This kind of curtails into that by taking a broader look now at the overall park itself, looking more in depth, starting out with some in-depth analysis on, on multiple fronts and analysis and documentation, but also a series of engagements as well, some steps through that process. We considered a journey, almost like you're going on a trip. We're going to, you know, kind of take a look at what, what we have for an automobile, which would be the park. We walk through the, the system of what we want to achieve. We start to ask questions of each family member, what they want to bring. We have to look out and do that outreach. We've had some of it, but we want to task other outliers within the community and make sure that the uses of the park are going to serve the, the whole of the community. We do that with an extensive engagement process and a reset process, working with both the committee and the town and then stakeholders, as well as the community in general. And then we walk through an iterative process of, of analysis and then understanding and then engagement to make sure, we're not just asking, you know, this is the way it is, we're asking questions that develop this roadmap for the entire park itself. We take what we've done in the past, we move that forward, and we keep an open mind, I think, and we're unobjective in the analysis portion and in the recommendations. We sometimes bring to light things that people are going to be very happy with and sometimes they're going to be very unhappy with, but we bring them through in, in a process that evokes an overall final goal of establishing both a, a plan for the park, but also the monetary costs in, in order to actually implement those park plans moving forward. That's kind of what we've presented at this point.
Yeah, I just had a couple, a couple of things to add, Dom, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
Just to, to build on that, one thing I wanted to highlight is we don't make decisions on the uses of the park. We facilitate outreach and public engagement. It's really the town and community decisions on those uses. We're here as technical advisors, as you, you look to do something in the park, where best to place that, how to use it, you know, what it may cost, what are any environmental permits that may be required. So I wanted to make that clear. Really, that public participation and community input is absolutely critical. The second thing I would say, you know, if you look at the, you know, the cost of this work, it's fairly substantial, but this is the roadmap for the future of the park. And with our work with other Connecticut municipalities and similar projects, this becomes the roadmap to go get additional funding beyond the town's contributions. There are state and federal grants out there, and having a plan that outlines and getting community input and buy-in and having graphics ready to go puts you at the front of the line and be in a great position to do that. Typically, depending upon the level of improvements, you're not doing all of these in one shot. So we look at phasing, planning for the future, and then as you get one grant that may fund one element, you do that and kind of keep moving. And over a series of years, you kind of get to the ultimate where, wherever the town may want to go. So I just wanted to add that a little bit. It's a very useful document.
They have like a time, timeframe on how long?
Well, he said over time, so it's not instant. How long will your--
How long the project, process takes?
The process of identifying.
Okay, we, we can take the process, we, we like, we roll in terms of months, in terms of master plan, but we can work that in. It usually is decided within the first month of the project. We, we've had these run anywhere between 10 and 18 months for the process itself. It really comes down to the groundwork at the very beginning. We start with our first kickoff move. We, we don't kind of just, we don't jump right into it, we need to gain a little bit of understanding and then we kind of lay that out. We come with a schedule, they normally are, like I said, around 12 months. We can condense and expand that, we've happened, we've happened to do that. Obviously, the more you condense, the less public input you get, so the more we expand. We also look at time of year. I hate to answer the question, but like, we're going into the summer months, so we want to make sure that we possibly expand out. So if there's people traveling, a lot of people take vacations, we want that, that influence of, of certain dynamics that use the park, both active and passive participants. The plan, we'll be looking at 10, 15, 20 years as we work with the town on, on the future aspects. And I think you've heard me say it before, it's a roadmap. Some places we'll, we'll leave undefined, we'll define outdoor areas, but like, there'll be room for improvement and, and obviously, the biggest thing, like Derek mentioned, was we apply real life costs to the end game. So you have this and we'll have multipliers on there to forecast out costs over time.
I, I would just add, our actual work efforts are probably somewhere in the range of about three to six months. And then just because of the, the process and allowing enough time for public input, we present something, take a pause for a couple of weeks or a month, depending upon how fast or measured, you know, you want to move ahead to allow people to digest, process, provide good feedback, and then we move ahead in the next step. So we can accelerate as much, but also kind of, you know, measure it to, to allow, you know, certain times of year are not good for meeting and getting public input. So we'll certainly work with everybody on that.
Summer is tough. Questions? Mitch?
Yeah, thank you. I want to say that going through your, your proposal to us, I was impressed with the amount of contact you expect to have with the public and the stakeholders. I'm also encouraged by the fact that you're planning using or developing a website that would dovetail into our website, or a page, I guess, that would dovetail into our website so people can get, you know, information, you know, in real time, so to speak. And the number of meetings you plan on, you know, putting together with, with the stakeholders, I think is very, very important to get the input that's necessary. Really, I was just, that was my, my comments, just a really one question. You mentioned grants, grant opportunities, maybe state, federal, or whatever. Is that something you will help us identify? It is, okay.
It's part of the program.
Thank you.
Just to elaborate on that, there's some grants out there that you might not qualify. We're going to tell you like, okay, it's not worth chasing this, but then there's some, there's some public-private partnerships, like, like Derek had mentioned, there's state grants, there's grants you might not even be aware of. There's a lot of different avenues, be it DEP, DOT, DECD, insert acronym, there's a lot more out there. And then, you know, we're fortunate enough that over time, others, other opportunities come up, so we give you the tools to kind of keep your eyes out for those different alternatives.
Thank you, thank you.
Any others? Questions, Dom?
Thank you.
Do we need to sign them? Tom, I know you got to have some sort of a question, come on now.
Just positive.
Hold on, guys, because I don't know what he's going to ask.
Tom Pisano, 523 Fairway Road, Orange, Connecticut. Yes, two things. One, we want to thank the Highway Department. We did get a sign that gets traffic going to lacrosse, playground, and soccer. That means Donnie Foyer listens to these meetings because he heard me ask for that one. Thank you, Donnie. But beyond that, I, pardon me for being skeptical, it's been 23 years at Fred Wolf Park and we can only get new outhouses next year. So I hope, I hope we go this. I'm 100% for a master plan. We had one, it apparently fell apart, but we like to see the development and glad to work with whoever. I have offered funds before, and unfortunately, the Parking Rec Department turned it down to do some developments, but I will proceed.
Thank you, Tom, that's a recording, we got that.
We'll take it. For those of you that have not heard me speak before, I have been saving money with Orange Soccer for 37 years. My swan song was going to be lights at Fred Wolf Park in the middle of the fields, the lacrosse fields, which we helped build. Soccer did donate $10,000 to start that going, and we're willing to do that again.
You donated to lacrosse, too?
Yes, we did, that's what I meant.
$14,000, I think.
Oh, well, cut down a lot of trees.
I don't know, but a lot.
At any rate, we're willing to do that. And, and I know that's part of the problem with this board. Where does this money come from and where does the development? And people are going to be very skeptical because, to be honest with you, without unilaterally playground being done and, and other improvements, nothing gets done there. So the, the master plan is very encouraging. They are 100% right, without the roadmap, you know, you can't get the funds. And Van, what's her name, Mary Van Wieland, mentioned that--
A wheelander.
Wheelander, mentioned, if you don't have a roadmap, it's hard for the state to approve the funds.
They won't.
They won't. So I, I don't have, I have no idea what this thing costs, so.
Well, it sounds like you got the money for the bathrooms.
Well, that would help too. That might be a first. If you put them where I, where I want them, that would be a first. Anyway, again, we're glad to work with the committee, and I know the committee has good people that, and I wish they would attend all the meetings. I, I like to attend this meeting and like to attend Park and Rec because I think that's the, the function of Park and Rec, so.
That's your area, I mean--
Just an opinion.
No, that's fine. Okay, guys.
Tom, the answer to your question though is $137,000. This is what's being proposed. For three months' work.
Spread out.
Over two years. Thank you, guys.
So could I make a motion to accept?
No, your motion is to recommend to the Board of Finance.
Right. John? All right, I'd like to recommend that due to the wonderful job that we have, really, John and PJ, honestly, you've done a great job on pulling this together. And B&amp;L, obviously, you've definitely showed them your stuff, so they want to hang around with you some more, so that's awesome. So I do recommend that we pass this on to the Board of Finance and recommend $137,000 to enter into a commitment with B&amp;L for--
Master Plan.
For a master plan for the park.
And it will actually be over time. It's not like they, I don't think you don't get a check all at once. They, they, just for those in the room and at home, we've had multiple checks, there's bills, there's actually one sitting on my desk right now.
That's where they're at.
The beauty is, I have the bills, I don't write the checks. But they, they have continually, through this process, sent bills for percentages of work done. So it's not like you're outlaying all that funds in one lump sum. It's as they do parts of the job, they, they bill for it. So this will, you know, potentially over a year, this will be spent. But, so the motion is to recommend to the Board of Finance to appropriate funds of $137,000 is what's estimated here, towards a master plan for Fred Wolf Park.
Second?
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Staying? Post? Anything else? Unanimous. Done.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
We appreciate it greatly.
Thank you.
Item number two is to consider an act on the request of the Orange Lions Club to waive the facility fee for the use of High Plains Community Center Pavilion on Saturday, August 17th, 2024, for a comedy show fundraiser. Ken Lentz is here to speak to the Lion Club's event.
Thanks, Jim. The Orange Lions Club is doing a fundraiser, a comedy under the stars. We've done the same fundraiser at the same location ever since the COVID epidemic started, and it was so popular, we decided to continue doing it under the picnic pavilion. So the purpose of my coming tonight, and I want to also recognize Mary Ann Miller, who's also a lion, who's the co-chair of this event. And we came tonight in order to request that the Selectmen waive the fee for rental of the large pavilion for that one night fundraiser. It's a charity fundraiser and a lot of the funds that are raised go back into this community as well as other Orange, other of the Lions charities.
Any questions, or if not, is there a motion to be made?
Motion to approve waiving the facility fee--
Motion to approve waiving the facility fee for the Orange Lions Club.
Second?
Okay. Okay.
The event is Saturday, August 17th, and we have tickets. We will, you can also get them through Anne Denny, who's the secretary and also a member of the Lions Club. Thank you very much.
Okay, very good. What's the matter? Wait a minute, why don't you come up and do that part? Come on now, get a little camera time. I know, Ken, I just was thinking that.
No, I just wanted to mention, this is a great event. It's going to be a fun event. We have four wonderful comedians, and one is, has been a resident of Orange. His name is Dave Sheen, and he will be one of our comedians. He was there last year, and he did such a great job that we had a lot of people who wanted him back. So we asked the main comedian, and he is getting David Sheen back, so.
So you have a town resident.
So we have a person who had, grew up in the town, and he knows a lot about the town. So if you come here, come to this event, I assure you, you're going to have a lot of laughs. So please support us, we would appreciate it. It's $30 a ticket, BYOB, BYO on snacks, and we're going to have a great raffle also. So thank you.
Very good. And that was Mary Ann Miller. Okay. Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous? Thank you. Item number three, to consider an act on request of the Orange Fire Department to hang their banner for the carnival across Orange Center Road. And this year, the carnival is from August 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th.
So moved.
What, what's the matter? Oh, that's, yeah, it's not in here, but you're right. Many, many parents wait until it's too late to order the wristbands for their children and grandchildren. That site is open. If you go to the Orange Volunteer Fire Association website, there is a link, I believe, there for the wristband purchases. It is now the middle of June, and you can buy those wristbands now just as easy as waiting and buying them the third week of July. Because the fourth week of July, you can't buy them. So I suggest that when you hear me talking about this, you go in your office room and get on your computer and purchase those wristbands so that you have them for the event. You pick them up at the carnival. It will ask you what night you're coming or what day you're coming and those sort of things. But you can buy them tonight, and they'll be waiting for you when you get there. Thank you, Anne, good thing you reminded me.
Send out one of those text alerts with a link, so people could, people could just click the link.
On the town website, we can. You can't use the first alert system or whatever our code red system is for that. Good old art. Okay, we have a, we have a, item number four is to consider an act on fees for the tax office. It's before you, Mr. Hurley, on page two of his memo, has some new fees with reasons next to them that, you know, are all in line with other towns and all, so it's very common. I actually didn't have any problems with any of these, which I usually do. Any questions on them?
I make a motion to.
Whoops. Go ahead.
Can I?
Go ahead.
I make a motion to accept the fee changes that Tom Hurley has mentioned, and I do compliment him on the explanations that he gave us in that, so it made it very clear for us to understand. So thank you, Tom.
Okay, so the motion is made, and seconded, so for discussion purposes, Mitchell.
Yeah, so Jim, you didn't have any issues with it, but I do.
Of course.
Well, two things. One is I thought about it, and I also checked with what Guilford does, which makes it easy for me to do. Almost everything that he's proposing, Guilford does not charge anything for. I've always found it very troubling that, you know, just to reprint a bill that we charge for it, and he wants to increase that. But I guess I've got, I wish Tom was here, and I know he's not been the best of health recently, but I mean, I want to talk more about the same-day motor vehicle release. I understand that's something that, you know, can be a burden and is something that we, would be an extra amount of work to do, but I want to know how much work it really is. But I'm also concerned about that and this research project. And here's why. We have, we have, people, when they come to the tax collector, usually aren't happy in the first place. And if they have an issue, to then say, well, I'll help you with it, but it's going to cost you this or that, I think really slaps people. And, you know, some people come because they, for whatever reason, haven't been able to pay their bills. Some people can and just forget, I get that. But the biggest problem I have is this whole research business about, you know, it takes time. Well, you're in the office, you're getting paid, and it takes time. I mean, by the same token, we could say that it takes time for the town clerk to research things, that people come in and ask the town clerk to help them research things. The town clerk doesn't charge you. The zoning enforcement officer doesn't charge you. The building official doesn't charge you. The electrical official doesn't charge you. The wetlands official doesn't charge you. Why are we having the tax collector's office charge people for questions that are raised and services that they do as a tax collector office? And that's where I have issue. I don't have issue with the, with the things that are already being charged. I get that. I'm not sure, I want to hear more information about the same-day motor vehicle and how much, how much time and effort that really takes. But I really have a problem raising these fees about things that require research. That's why you go to the tax office.
But I think if you look at it, it says, "Request for more than quick lookups."
What's the definition of a quick lookup?
Well, if somebody just comes in, what's their bill, you know, or my mother's bill, or something like that is one thing. But you get some where it requires, similar to title searching, where you can't put a computer out in front, like you have in the town clerk's office, where people, title searchers and all come, and we make it available, and they do the work. In this case, it might be things like, well, we have a couple of them right now where there's lawsuits involved and multiple, multiple happenings that go back and forth and purposefully get mixed and confused. I can't use the examples on TV, but there are some, and a lot of those are things that end up in court. And, you know, you'll get a lawyer that'll come in that needs a history. And that, those are the ones that he's talking about. It's not just a simple track down of the past year's bill or somebody didn't bring in their bill type of thing. Not that many people want a copy of a bill either. They, sometimes they'll lose it. The biggest thing is they never got it because they don't realize there's two tabs on that bill when they get it. And then they take the one thing, and then they put it away somewhere, and it won't be found till for another seven years. But that does happen. Their January payment, they're like, we never got a bill. Yeah, you did, it came with the, for your July bill, there are two pieces on there. Oh. So those are the kind of situations there. DMV charges, I believe, more of a fee. Most people don't realize that DMV is in our computer system, both in the assessor's office and in the tax collector's office regarding motor vehicles. And they're actually involved even in the registrar's office because if you, if you move from here to Canton, but don't re-register your car and you leave it with your Orange address, it doesn't kick out.
Right.
As soon as you re-register that car in Canton, the registrars get notified, DMV sends it to the state registrars, which then ticks it and nicks it out in Orange and sends it to Canton, which is sometimes why we've gotten these crossover bills where people have moved away, not realizing that their taxes are in arrears. And it gets a little confusing. But those are the types of examples I can give you for those things. And DMV will get a lot of people who need to register their car and all of a sudden didn't pay it for three years or something because it's like four-year registrations and stuff. And then they come in, and they'll want to write a check. Well, you can't write a check and get it instantly cleared because we have to wait for the check to clear if you're going to do that. And so then they have to bring in cash. So they bring in cash so they can get it cleared, and I need it right now. Well, normally, you can't get it right now. The previous tax collector used to do it once a week at the end of the week. Your current tax collector will do it, but it's a little bit cumbersome, and DMV doesn't act on it instantaneously once you hit the button to send it to DMV. But people don't realize, as a matter of fact, a lot of people get surprised when they see the assessment on their cars. We don't actually do the assessments on the cars. Those are all structured by DMV. Many people don't realize that, that those are in there. However, taxes, I think in the town of Orange on motor vehicles, it's about $6 million? About $6 million or a little more is collected on motor vehicle taxes in the town of Orange. That is something to think about. I'm getting a little off what the paper is here. But when the state talks about doing away with motor vehicle taxes across the state, so if they take $6 million out so that, or even half of that, and so that everybody, they level the playing field. So then you have to make up, say, $3 million in taxes that, to level your budget. So that's just another part of it. While, but people don't realize what, how the state is involved, more so with motor vehicles than they are with your house property taxes. So that's all I can offer you on those things, Mitch.
All right. I appreciate the explanations, Jim. I just, I just feel that, you know, and maybe, maybe it takes a little bit more explanation for me to be able to, you know, to be voting for this. Maybe it's requests from somebody other than the homeowner or taxpayer, if it's coming from a law firm or from somebody doing research outside of the, outside of the resident.
That's mostly what they are.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe that's where we can draw some lines here. And then the same-day motor vehicle release, you know, you know, I'm just not sure what it really costs us to do that. And if it does cost something, then fine, we should charge it. But just a $20 charge, you know, after you've, people come in, they want to get a release right away. They're sitting there with a check in their hand or a credit card, and you say you got to do cash, so they have to first go to the bank. They're already ticked off because they're going to the bank to get cash.
Because they didn't pay their bill.
I understand that. And then they come back with the cash, and then you first, then you say, you still have to wait. I don't know, I just, I don't feel we're doing a service to the taxpayer. I don't think we're being.
Well, if you want to hold.
I don't think we're being friendly, let's put it that way. I think, you know, that we can be a friendlier.
Are you okay with some of those? If you want to do some and hold out on some?
Yeah, probably, I'm probably okay with.
Do it à la carte.
You know, well, some of it, he's not changing because it's by statute, so.
That's right.
I'd rather either discuss it further, or, you know, if the board feels that strongly that they want to approve this, I'll just vote no. I just, just feel that that's, you know, and I think, you know, he does say, other towns like Anne Sonja and Norwalk charge this fee. Well, that's two out of 169. I wonder if, what the other 167 are doing. Not that I need him to go check every, every town. What's Woodbridge doing? What's Milford doing? What's, what's some of our neighbors are doing?
Mitchell.
Yep.
John, do you, John, do you have any idea how often the research project fee comes up? Or?
I have no idea. I haven't discussed any of that.
No. I can't imagine it comes up that often.
It is a burden when somebody comes in and they're trying to register their motor vehicle because they haven't paid taxes and they can't do it. You can't accept a check, obviously, and do that right away. But what he has to do to get it to a motor vehicle, I'm not sure. It used to be in the old days, you have a piece of paper stamped.
They would take it with them. But now you don't go to motor vehicle anymore.
But is it just, is it just pushing a button at this point?
Yeah.
Seriously?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Well, it's probably a program that they have to go into.
I don't know. That's why I'd like more information, first of all, personally, to try and understand this better. Or I just don't feel it's justified at this point. So it's the board's decision whether we want to go forward tonight or not.
There was a motion and a second, so can anybody else?
Thoughts? That's it?
I'd be, I don't know, how often does it come up? I mean, is, I can't imagine.
The research, the research thing, most every time a title searcher comes in, they have to go in there for information. If it's simple, cut and dried, and everything's current, it's easy. If it's like some of the ones that we have that are, have severe issues going on with them.
So a title searcher, that's not, that's a business, that's not a homeowner, right?
Generally, yes. They're generally working for a legal group, and they, you know, it's billable.
Right.
Kind of like, can we do something, sorry, John, this is the thing, like we do at the transfer station, you know, certain things that a resident is able to do, but if it's a business, you're going to be charged, can we kind of, if we're looking to do this, can we do kind of the same kind of bifurcating here, possibly? Just a thought.
Can I just share something with you? I went into Milford, and it really is.
Okay, go ahead.
I went into Milford, and my daughter owns a condo there. And I needed something with research about the condo. They were so gracious, they charged me nothing. It was very simple. I remember asking something in Orange, and quite frankly, I don't remember what it is, maybe, you know, several years ago, and it wasn't so simple.
We know, Chris, we know, we know.
And that's, that's, you know, that's two towns right next to one another. And to me, there shouldn't have been, there shouldn't have been a request for a charge in Orange where Milford was very gracious, and they had to look into books.
You probably. I do it with a smile. You probably dealt with the previous tax collector here. Yes. As you hear the giggles here at the table.
I know, I know, and I know what you're saying.
It's a bit different now.
But all I'm telling you is that was, that was wrong.
And actually, one of those ladies now works for us. Fran is, works here, from Milford. She says it's a much different place to work here now. Go ahead, John.
If I may.
I just wanted to share that.
I didn't mean to interrupt him, sorry.
I was just going to say, if one of our board members has a concern, and it can easily be addressed by Mr. Hurley being here, why don't we table it for a month?
Wait until next month?
Yeah.
Or get a, get a narrative from him?
Or get a narrative from him.
Okay.
Thank you, John. Jim, one last thing, though?
No, we tabled it.
Before, just, no, to clarify, just to clarify. When we've changed fees for building officials, for even Park and Rec, I think we've had to have an ordinance. Is this something we can just do unilaterally?
Yeah, this is an ordinance.
Okay. Want to make sure we didn't have to go that route.
No, this is an ordinance.
Thank you.
Yeah. I asked that, too. All right, so that will be tabled until next month. Either we'll get a narrative from him that explains it a little further, or if he's in the mood, he'll come here. Okay. Well, what came up next on mine is item number six. Consider an act on request to approve tax refunds totaling $7,105.22.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go, what's this? Oh, that's for afterward, next thing.
Did you stick to number five?
I did, we're going there next. Yeah, because I knew that would fly through very quickly, so I said, I will just. This next one is. Couple there. Well, it's, there's a bunch of stuff he handed out here. This one for you, which, this? Oh, okay, there's two there. There's two there. There's one for you there. This was interesting, it kind of came out of left field. I was approached by Tim Chaucer, who runs this maritime museum and all down in Milford. They were displaced from one of their locations, an old sewer plant building, because it's in poor condition and all, and he called. And he was wondering about the house we bought there out in front of Mariel Tracy School and if it would be available for museum use over there. And it's been kicking around for a couple of months now because we had town meeting and budget and all that stuff. And so, and there's one young man. And so, and there's one young man who lives here, I think on Courier Drive, who's one of his helpers in this thing and all. And they do a lot of very interesting work with sea stuff and all ocean, oceanography kind of stuff and all. And here's, they got some stuff. I'm trying to think. Here's some pictures, John, of some of their... Oh, they got copies. Well, they're easier to see there. But I mean, he has the cigar store Indians they have, they're real ones. They have large marine mollusks. I don't know, Dominic will know what those are. Native American deciduous decorated ash wood splint baskets, Algonquin lithic tools, axes, things. They have a whole collection of these Penobscot root war clubs. They have over a dozen of them, it says here. Wood decoys. They have a lot of stuff. And they're interested, if we're interested, in using that first floor as a museum. Second floor would be their storage and prep area for some of this stuff. Now, there was an email included on the front where he had a lot of asks, and I'm not quite... Everybody should have got one. But, you know, there's some things on there I don't think that we should be quite so generous. But I thought it was a very interesting use of the building. We all agreed when we bought it that we weren't going to use it for a residential use. And we talked about making it a commercial, professional, you know, small engineering office, or attorney, or accountant, or something along that line. And then this came along. So it's an opportunity. You may still want to go the other route, or you may want to be interested in this. But that's why I passed it out now, and, you know, you get to think about it, talk about it, and, you know, consider it. If you want to consider it, I would have him come to the next meeting and explain it in, you know, further detail and all. But I didn't know if it was something that would interest you. I mean, he gets very excited. He has a vertebrae that's this big of a whale backbone, you know what I mean? And things like that. So he has some piece of stony handed me or something. It was this shiny, big, broken-up piece of stone. He goes, "You know how old that is?" "No idea. It's three and a half million years old." I didn't know even what it was, but, you know, some of the things I do. But it's interesting. It offers a different opportunity, but I don't know if it's, it's not going to generate any dollar benefit, whereas the other potential use is wood. Mitchell.
Thanks, Jim. Jim, first of all, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I personally like the idea of the building being used for some sort of museum, nonprofit...
Cultural.
Yeah, thank you. Cultural activity that might benefit the residents of the town and elsewhere. Not sure this is the perfect match, but it's certainly worth talking about. I think just the fact it's on our agenda we're discussing tonight might get anybody watching this or reading our minutes interested in some other potential similar-type use. I think, especially if you're going to have Mr. Chaucer or anybody come before us to discuss this, I think it would be really helpful, at least for me personally, I think for the rest of us, if between now and the next meeting, if there's a five o'clock hour or something, we could take a walk through. Is it worth us seeing what, to visualize what he has seen? It would help us, I think, to visualize also the interior of that building as well, because I've not been in there.
Oh, that one. I thought you meant what he wants to display.
No, 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 just, no, just the 643 Orange Center Road. I have not been inside that facility. I don't think, I don't know if anybody else has.
You come in anytime. We have a key hanging. I'll be glad to...
All right. Unless you want, do you want us to just do it on our own? Do you want to have a meeting or something?
Whatever.
Whatever you want, that's fine.
You people decide available.
No, I think it's a, but to answer your basic question, I think it's a great idea to be utilizing that for something, as you say, cultural, that benefits, you know, not just an individual business or entity, but actually the entire area. I think that'd be a great use of that area. And also, hopefully, the people over at Mary Tracy School can use the parking area as well in the meantime, because that's one of the other reasons why we did that. And then finally, since we're on it, Jim, what will it take for us? Maybe the summer months are a good time to do this. Maybe it's not, while school's out, to actually expand? Is it possible to expand the neck of that, or throat, whatever you want to call it, of the, of Schoolhouse Lane, to put in two turning lanes coming out of that, a left and a right, that might help alleviate some of the backups? Now, the trees are down...
There really aren't. You know what, quite honestly? Since they've taken those trees down and you've got the visibility north and south?
Yeah.
It hasn't been that bad.
Okay. I mean, I just thought it might be easier. You get the guy somebody's trying to take a left-hand turn, and you can't get right.
Dominic, look at it someday when he comes for coffee. We'll take him over there to look at it.
Won't you glad you stuck around, Dominic?
But I mean, so far, there really hasn't been. And actually, the Board of Education office personnel have been parking in there. I told them, "Go in the driveway, park to the right on the lawn," which they've been doing. And so then it alleviates and allows for a little more parking. The ultimate goal is to get the pares and teachers that are parking across on the Congregational Church and Crossing over there so that they don't have to be crossing Orange Center Road. That's the ultimate goal with that. I hope to work towards that this summer. I also spoke with the owner of the property next door, or the father of the owner of the property. There's one tree right at the back corner that really has to either be pruned way back or come down. It's a great big maple, but it has a big claw that's hanging right over that far back corner of the house. If that came down, you might as well make the whole thing a parking lot. I mean, it would finish it all.
Let's not lose sight of the fact this is in the historical district zone, so...
No, it is. I understand that.
Let's be careful before we go too far with anything.
But you can still cut a tree down.
Trees, yes.
But anyhow, so if this is of any interest to you, if you want to see the building between now and next meeting, and then tell me if you want to consider this or not. You should see the building first, and then we could put it on the agenda and arrange for Mr. Chaucer to be here from the marine science camps and whatever it is, marine, this Milford Marine Institute. So what I'll say first is, anybody who wants to come, just call me, message me, text me, and I'll take you over there, open it up. You can all go at once, or you can go one at a time. I don't care. We are going to be doing, have to do some work to it. They're going to put a roof on it before the season is over, and some other things need to be done. Probably a coat of paint, probably some minor woodworking. You know, Jon Stewart did put new locks on it and all. So, you know, other than that, that's what we got. So that's it for the moment on it. There is no action to take on it, really. If you're interested, if you're interested in having him, whether you see the house or not, you can discuss that now also. I didn't know how you would feel about it one way or another. He approached me. I was very surprised. I thought it was kind of neat. But I'm only one.
Well, if I may, because you asked us to chime in, there's always an interest for people looking at the property. But as Ms. said just a moment ago, that really the primary objective was to make sure that the teachers and opares and so forth had adequate parking over there. And my fear is if you have any type of professional going in there, you're easily looking at six to eight parking spots that are going to be needed for that individual to operate in office.
Those would go on the left.
Okay. But all I'm saying is it's eight spots, basically, for somebody. And if you have somebody that's having a museum, that there's an interest. Now, I know in his thing here, he said, you know, one day a month, so it's not like it's a big deal. I guess it would be a big deal if it's on a school day. That's just something we have to consider. But that's my two cents. That's all.
That's correct. Absolutely.
I say, ask everybody and come before us and talk. I mean, it's something that we should look into.
Well, I thought a professional space there would work better, but then, you know, we were approached with this. For us, it has minimal impacts, really, as far as remodeling or fitting.
Yep.
Whereas the other is going to have a little bit of impact to us. But you also do get revenue out of it. So think about it, then. Just think about it. And then between now and next month's meeting, let us know.
All right.
All right?
Thank you.
Excellent. All righty, thank you. Pension Board, Mitchell.
Yes. So you recall a couple of months ago, a month or so ago, we did discuss a potential medical situation with, for a pension. We have another one coming up, and the Pension Board did go back to our town council and asked that the applicant's medical history be reviewed before we go any further with that. So it's another one, just so you know, down the line, we may be seeing another request for something of that sort. We also had our annual review, it's really our first annual review, of the town's defined contribution plans. Scott Bolton from Fiducian gave a report, went through all the situations that have been taking place with our defined contribution plan, and basically said, "All strategies are on maintain right now. No recommended changes. Everything is going well." And that's coming from an outside consultant telling us that, so we're very pleased to hear that. And then finally, the markets were up 4% in the first quarter, and that's, and as were our pension funds as well. So things are still in a good state. If there's any questions, that's pretty much the pension report.
Maybe they all own Nvidia. Okay, thank you for that. Is there anything else? Otherwise, we need a motion to go into, to close the regular meeting and go into executive session to discuss the hourly salary non-union employees, and we invite Finance Director Sifarelli to join that meeting.
There was a motion and a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Take a five-minute quick breather if you want. Okay. Well, we are back in from executive session at 8:35, and we had one item to discuss was the non-union hourly salary employees. Mr. Sifarelli sat in on that with us as Finance Director. Are there any motions to be made on that topic?